Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regular call meeting for Thursday, April the 5th of the Temple City Council. Please rise. Reverend Shelton Rhodes will lead us in our invocation this evening from the Greater Zion Church of God in Christ. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by a couple of absolutely incredible kids.
Every head bowed. Our Father God, we come to you once again. Lord, we come thanking you for this wonderful day that you've made. We rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we thank you for your wisdom and for your guidance and your direction. Lord, to each of our councilmen today, to our mayor, to the great leaders of this great city. What is said in your word in Psalm 119:105? That your word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our pathway. And Lord, we believe you today to grant wisdom, guidance, strength, and direction even now. Lord, as we conduct the business of this great city, we thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Janet and Faith, will you come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Just face the flag and follow you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with every human justice for all.
Thank you. We'll see you again soon. Again, welcome everyone. Glad to have you with us this evening. Our first item on the agenda tonight is going to be a presentation from Dr. Kincaid with the Belton Independent School District. Dr. Kincaid, welcome. We're glad to have you with us. And we're going to receive a presentation from Dr. Kincaid, Superintendent of the ISD regarding the Belton ISD bond package.
Great. Thanks for having me this evening. I'm here tonight just to give you a little bit of information about the upcoming bond election for the school district. As you know, the Board of Trustees called an election for May 12 to build three new schools in the district. And so, just a little bit of background information. Here we go. As you know, the state grew by 20% over a 10-year period from census to census from 2000 to 2010. During that same timeframe, Bell County grew by 20%. And Belton ISD grew by about 38% in terms of the net total number of people living within the school district boundaries. The number of school-aged children at the same time grew by 40% in the school district. And so, you can see on this map, this is a five-year period from the '06-'07 school year until this year, that we grew by 19.1% over the last five years. We are considered a fast-growth school district. Fast-growth school districts are those that grow by 10% over a five-year period. And so, that's indicated there in the red. I think they're growing very rapidly. This graph, it demonstrates that growth in 2000, which is the year I started in Belton ISD as an intermediate school principal. We had about 6,600 students in the district. Today, we have nearly 10,000 students, 9,511. And we're projected to continue to grow over the next many years. You can see here that by 2020, we expect to have over 13,000 students. And those are demographers predictions based on birth rates and historical trends. And those are our moderate projections for the school. This is an interesting map that shows we have approximately 47 students per square mile. We do encompass 197 square miles of school district. And we're very low in terms of density compared to other surrounding school districts. Temple has 151, Kalina has 113, and Copperstoke has about 129 students per square mile. And lots of capacity for growth because of the planning of cities such as yourself, who have great infrastructure in place, water and sewer in the northern part of the school district. And there is a capacity for continued growth in West Temple, in the city of Temple, and in Belton ISD. So, based on our numbers, we brought in a facilities planning committee in the fall to review that information and talk about the facility needs of the district. We held four meetings, and from those meetings emerged some priorities. Those priorities were to address high school capacity, to address our elementary capacity needs, and to reduce our district's dependence on portables, with a large number of portables in the school district. Most of those are in the city of Belton and our schools there. But however, we do have an entire grade level in portables at Lakewood Elementary. And about 70% of our portables are 20-years or older. Those at Lakewood are 20-years old already. And then, the committee also thought that it was important that we continue with our 10-year facilities plan for secondary schools. We implemented Phase 1 during our last bond election with the opening of South Belton Middle School next to Highway 190. And Phase 2 calls for a replacement middle school to help us with high school capacity next to Belton High School. You can see our high school number, our high school population is growing. In 2000, we had about 1,900 students in grades 9 through 12. Today, we have just over 2,500. Most of those are at Belton High School. However, we do have about 120 currently at our Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, which is a small campus that's focused on project-based learning and technology. We just recently recruited another 135 students for our second freshman class there. And we'll continue to grow that program to about 500 students. But we do anticipate having 4,000 students in grades 9 through 12 by 2020. And so, the plan to address that capacity is to build a new middle school in the northern part of Belton ISD. And when we think about Belton ISD, we think of the school district running north and south along Highway 317. So, we say the northern part of the school district that essentially is the city of Temple and the city of Morgan's Point and Moffett area for us. That new school, that replacement middle school, would be built east of Highway 317, where you see the star there in the north. And it would open in the fall of 2014, which is three school years from now. And that would allow us to use Belton Middle School for a part of high school capacity and help us bridge to that Phase 3 when we open a second high school, a second comprehensive high school in the district. And here you can see Belton High School, since it's just next to Belton Middle School. And so, we have the ability, it's less than 300 feet apart, we have the ability to close off Tiger Drive, which runs between the two schools there, and use that for whatever purpose we choose. We can control the movement of students and access by cars and keep maintaining pretty good tight control of that. So, that's what makes that plan work for us, is that the two schools are located directly next to each other. At the elementary level, we're also growing. In fact, we'll have doubled from 2000 to 2020, our population from about 3,100 to about 6,200 students in grades pre-85. Again, we are just under 5,000 elementary students now. And we are over capacity. If we were to take those old portables offline, where we have homeroom classes for elementary students, we would be short. We have about the capacity in our core buildings, we're about 4,510. So, the plan to address that elementary growth, it's not working for me. Is to build two new elementary schools. The first would be built in the fall of 2013. That's a new elementary school in the north, again, in the city of Temple, out on FM 2483, which is that Morgan's Point Road, where you all have a new water tower out there for us. And that would be our ninth elementary school, opening in the fall of 2013. And that would help us with our capacity needs up there. Just a closer look at that middle school site, proposed site, which is east of Highway 317, out there by Prairie, P. Ridge, excuse me, Prairie G. And then, the elementary site there is shown tucked in the back of window farms. And so, we've been talking with city staff about lights and access to those schools and the location of peak traffic lights to assist in getting students in and out and trying to make decisions about where the front of the school might be and where parents might access in comparison to buses and that kind of thing. So, we're pretty excited about that. And should the bond pass, then those two of the three schools would be built in the city of Temple. Second elementary school in the bond package would open at the same time as the middle school in the fall of 2014, would be our 10th elementary school. And we propose that that would be in the city of Belton in the southern part of the school district. And we're working, we haven't identified a site for that yet. We're studying some property as a proposed location. And so, the plan does address our high school capacity needs. It helps us with our elementary needs as well. It will allow us to depend less on those old portables in terms of our space at the elementary level. And we believe that it will address our projected facility needs through 2018. Didn't say 2020, because we don't know how fast or how slow that growth might come. And we'll have to continue to monitor each year and with some future demographic studies to see if those facilities will hold us any further. But right now, we're pretty confident it will be okay through 2018. It is a $60 million bond package. That's with an estimated interest rate of 3.56%, which are some of the best rates that we've seen. As a matter of fact, we recently refinanced some bonds this past year, saving several hundred thousand dollars for our school district. And we have some more refunding in the process and hope to save up to another $2 million on some 2004 bonds that we had. Now, the comp trailer was here a couple of weeks ago and talked about bond debt. And so, we wanted to provide some factual information about that. We do have currently about $9,000, a little over $9,000 per student, in bond debt, which for a total of $88 million. And should the bond pass, we would have just over $15,000 per student. And you can see there that we have included other school districts in the area as a comparison for you. Georgetown, Amherst, Leno Troy, Rogers, Temple Holland, and Academy ISDs. And so, we're pretty low in that group now. And we would move up in those rankings, just above Temple ISD there. But we are unique. We're growing fast, as I said. And so, we then took a look at school districts that are considered fast-growth districts. Frisco, Hutto, Land, or Lake Travis, Case Consolidated, and you can see the list there midway at the bottom. We're currently at the bottom of that grouping. And we would move up slightly in that grouping should the bond election pass. Thought that would be interesting. The estimated tax impact is 11 points cents for $100 valuation, which is $117 a year on a $100,000 home, or $9.75 a month. And that is an estimate. We opened South Belton Middle School just after the bond election passed. We increased our tax rate by one cent. And this past year, we were able to decrease it by a penny and a half. We got better-than-anticipated interest rates. We qualified for some state aid, and our tax values have increased. So, we had really great conditions. And so, we've had no increases as a result of opening a new campus this year. So, that is, that 11.7 cents is an estimate. And of course, your home's debt can be frozen if you're 65 years or younger. Last day to register to vote is April 12. Early voting will run April 30 through May the 8th. And Election Day is on May 12. And you can see our polling location is there. And we do have vote courses, you probably knew as well. We do have new board member areas. So, citizens who vote on Election Day, we need to be aware of those board member areas in order to know which of the two Saturday polling locations that we need to go to to vote. And that is it. If you have any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Kincaid. Very exciting questions from the council. Dr. Kincaid.
Thank you. I think I'd love to mention we have 3,000 students north of the Leon River currently, and that is a growing number for us. And many of those students are in the city of Temple. So, we are here. Okay. Impressed.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Quick item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. We have no one signed up to speak in public comments tonight normally. And this time, we take the comments for those who signed up. The comments are limited to three minutes and no discussion or final actions. Right off to that item. We have a busy schedule. Next item is a proclamation and special recognition. First, bringing up our Absolutely Incredible Kids again with Mr. Karen Allman, who's the Executive Director for Campfire, Boys and Girls here in the Texas area. And Karen, welcome. Glad to have you here. Ladies, we are thrilled to have you here. I'd like to present a proclamation if I may, recognition of the event coming up. And then, let Allman talk to us about that in just a few minutes, unless you guys want to talk. Whereas Campfire USA Tejas Council will sponsor Absolutely Incredible Kid Day on April 12, 2012. Whereas Campfire USA Tejas Council has issued a call to action asking for every adult in America to write a letter to a child or children on their page. Whereas Campfire USA Tejas Council has established a goal for every child to receive a letter on April 12, 2012. Whereas through contemporary programs and by speaking out on issues affecting youth and their families, Campfire USA helps youth cope with their changing world. And whereas Campfire USA Tejas Council is commended for the invaluable programs offered to young people in Temple, Texas, and for the many services that these young people can perform for their communities with Campfire. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Jones III, the Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 12, 2012 as Absolutely Incredible Kid Day in the city of Temple, Texas. And I urge all citizens to join with Campfire USA, the Tejas Council, in its efforts to encourage every adult in America to write a letter to a child or children on this special day and let them know they are special, both in person and testimony as well. I am by hand and the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, and miss the 12th day of April of 2012. Thank you very much. Appreciate it for all the work that you do in our community and have done for many years, forever and always. Ladies, thank you for being here. It's very nice to meet you. Let me give you a quick one.
All right. Thank you so very much. I don't know how many of you have ever been able to make it to our Absolutely Incredible Kids Celebration. This will be the 13th. We started doing this in 2000 because we wanted to focus on the positive things that youngsters were doing throughout our community. Before that, you all remember there were some tragic things that happened in Colorado with Columbine and that type of thing, and a lot of copycats. And we were seeing a lot of negative publicity about youngsters. So, that's how come our committee down here in this, in Belquio Falls County, decided to do the Absolutely Incredible Kids Celebration. What we do is in January, we send out nomination forms to all the schools and organizations. We put an article in the paper telling people we're accepting nominations. And then, we have an independent committee that selects 10 youngsters each year to be recognized at the celebration. And actually, this year, for the first time in several years, these youngster's older sister, Abigail T. Poe, was selected as one of our Absolutely Incredible Kids. And we're really thrilled about that. She's done a lot of fine work through community service and taking care of older citizens in need and that type of thing. But anyway, it's a really awesome experience. And we are proud as Campfire to be able to present, and we're honored to be able to present this for our communities. So, what we're going to do now is the girls are going to hand out some stationery, and it has an Incredible Kids sticker on it. And also, in case you'd like to call, that reservation's a number where you can call. And there's a stationery piece there that you can write a letter to an important child in your life. And we thank you so very much. And thank you all for all supporting Campfire all these years. And we appreciate it so much. And thank you, City Council and Mayor Jones. Judy has Judy. You know, you know you're getting old when you've taught one of the council members. When I used to teach school at Lamaran many years ago, and the other one in Sunday School when he was in the first grade. So, anyway, but we will pass these out there. Thank you so very much.
Just a few moments, please.
Judy, thank you. Proud of you. I know that. Thank you. You have been a clear man. You did teach. I hope you all take time and write a letter to a young person and encourage them and just tell them how important they are. So, thanks very much. Karen, good to see you. Janet and Faith, thank you for being with us. And congratulations. A couple of wonderful kids. Next item on the agenda is to receive a certificate of film-friendly Texas community from Mr. Evan Fitzmaurice, Director of Texas Film Commission, and Nancy Glover, our Director of Tourism in Temple, and Mr. Fitzmaurice to come forward at this time.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Welcome. Council members, thanks for having me. This is a bit of a belated trip. I run the Texas Film Commission, which is a 40-year-old agency in the office of the Governor. Starting a few years ago, we started a program to sort of guide communities in Texas, cities, various types of organizations, organizations who might have folks who might decide to attend a class, serve up some folks who are good local contacts for us, provide us with some pictures, and then pass a city ordinance, which contains film guidelines, which might help my office and my staff, five people in the Temple area in this case, who are ready to receive film and television and commercial production in your city limits. So, what we've done here is, and this is belated, this should have been delivered some time ago, apologize for that, Mayor. What it is, is it's a film-friendly community designation presented in Temple, Texas, in recognition of its achievement as a certified film-friendly Texas community, signed by the Governor and signed by the person that runs the program in my office. So, what I'd like to do is present this to Nancy and the mayor, the assembly group here. Hand it to the mayor and the council. And while she's doing that, what this means is when my office gets a call from a film or television show that's looking for a certain local field in Texas, we have now in our library pictures of your city, and we have contacts like Nancy who we could work with to send the production to, but at this time, we're perhaps put Temple on the screen. So, many of you didn't realize that was happening. It has happened. And the mayor now has the certificate. I think this is.
I got it.
Ah, okay. All right.
Do you want to video here or just?
Yeah. This is still available. This is still. So, thanks for having me. If you want to take a question.
Thanks very much for taking the time to come and present us. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda relates to bonds. We'll read both of these items together, and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Bernard to introduce our guests and make any comments. Item 5 is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple, Texas general obligation refunding bonds, approving an official statement, a repaying agent, registration agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an ESCO agreement, establishing the procedures for selling and delivering one or more of the bonds, and authorizing other matters relating to the bond. On item 6 is a first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple, Texas pass-through agreement revenue and limited tax bonds, approving an official statement, a paying agent, register agreement, a bond purchase agreement, establishing the procedure for selling and delivering one or more of the bonds, and authorizing other matters relating to the bonds. Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a brief summary. The ordinance is you just read, delegate authority to issue geo-refunding bonds and pass-through agreement revenue and limited tax bonds. Next slide, please. Why a delegation allows for flexibility on timing of the issuance, sizing of the issuance, market conditions determine refunding options. At this point in time, we don't know our final construction cost on the Northwest Loop project. We plan to advertise in the near future and possibly open bids at the end of, mid to end of May. At that time, we'll have our final sizing of the issue. With all of that said above, the delegation ordinance allows more advantageous borrowing costs for maximum debt service savings. In the ordinance, who do you delegate authority to? Is it to the Director of Finance or in my absence, the City Manager or Mayor? I just briefly on the geo-refunding issue. It's not new money. It's refunding existing debt at a lower interest rate. And currently, as I've mentioned earlier in our work session, we've changed the amount from what was in your council packet or narrative. It's not to exceed par amount of $38 million. Again, Carol will go over that in more detail. Next issue that's under consideration is the pass-through agreement revenue and limited tax bonds. These bonds will fund the Northwest Loop 363 improvements to include construction, private utility relocations, environmental mitigation, capital interest during the construction period, issuance costs, and then also we have contingencies built in the delegation authority. The estimated total, or estimated amount of not to exceed today is $35,515,000. Go with the detail of the $35,515. It includes construction, estimated construction cost today, plus a contingency of $40 million, $40.7 million. As you'll recall in your pass-through agreement that you entered to it with text dot, they are applying or contributing $20 million of category 12 funds toward that project. We subtract that from the construction cost. So, we'll receive that directly from text dot to pay for construction. We add the utility relocation and environmental cost, estimated capitalized interest during construction of $3.9 million. And then, as you see, issuance cost underwriters discounts and additional contingency for premiums, discounts associated with the bond sale, and that totals $35,515,000. Then Carol Plumb will go over this in much more detail. The briefly pass-through financing bonds are secured by the agreement that was approved in September with the text dot. Within the agreement, they will, in addition to the $20 million, they will reimburse over time up to $16,555,000 once the project is completed and we've turned it over to the state. And in addition to the text dot agreement, the bonds are secured by a limited applicable tax pledge from the city. At this time, I'd like to introduce Carol Plumb. She's with our bond council. She can go over the details of the ordinance. And when she's completed, Dan Wethmiller, our financial advisor, will go over the details of the transaction in passing. Ms. Plumb.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Carol Plumb with McCall Parker, St. Horton. Glad to be here with you this evening. Wanted to go over each of these ordinances with you. One may look a little familiar than the others, so I'm going to spend a little more time on the pass-through. But very quickly, on the general obligation refunding ordinance, as you'll recall, I think the last few series of obligations issued by the city, we have utilized authority under Texas law that the city can use to delegate pricing as Tracy has explained. Under that delegation authority, as long as certain parameters that are set forth in this old document, then the Director of Finance is authorized to actually price the bonds, assuming she's happy with the market conditions and financial advisor recommendation and all that. So, those are. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the GEO refunding ordinance first, and then we can move on and talk about the pass-through if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
On the pass-through is a little different, and actually, this process started many years ago. I remember working with the Mayor and city staff who worked very hard on the legislation that actually provided this financing vehicle in two or four cities, which is Chapter 15 10 of the Texas Government Code. It allows cities to be able to debt finance based off the contractual payments received in an agreement with the Department of Transportation, and then also add, if you will, a backstop pledge of the city's limited tax to assist, as Dan can tell you, with ratings and lower, to achieve the lowest interest cost on the debt. So the reason this ordinance is a little different is because it's a double barrel, if you will. The flow of funds is set up such that once you receive payments under the agreement from the department, which recognizing you don't receive until what is a year after substantial completion of the project, the payments come into a revenue account, if you will, and the first draw on that is to pay principal interest on the bonds. To the extent that the payments under the agreement with the department are not sufficient to pay principal interest, then we have the further backstop pledge, if you will, of the limited abhorrent tax of the city. And I think that the structure is such that upfront, you know, there is a certain amount of debt services payable from the payments in the agreement, and a certain amount that will be picked up from the city's abhorrent tax, but the bonds are technically payable from both. This ordinance also sets forth a point similar to what we discussed on the GEO refunding. It is valid for one year. It does allow one or more series of bonds. I don't necessarily anticipate there'll be more than one series of bonds, but it does if for some reason that were necessary. So this is valid until April 5, 2013. If it's not executed within that period, we'd have to come back to the Council for further approval. The not to exceed principal amount of the one or more series is $35,515,000, and the not to exceed maturity date is August 1, 2042. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, generally about this structure or anything else on the ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions relative to the question?
Carol, while you're there, I mean, maybe you can explain how specific their motion needs to be.
Yes, I think on each of these, it would be helpful to have the motion to approve the ordinance for the general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series with a not to exceed principal amount of the $38 million, and the maturity date of not to exceed August 1, 2026. And then I can help you with the same on the pass-through. It would be a word for a motion to approve the ordinance for the pass-through agreement revenue and limited tax bonds in one or more series with the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35,515,000, and a maturity date not to exceed August 1, 2042.
Twenty what?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
I know that's a mouthful, I'm sorry.
No, that's great. That's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's any other questions. Mr. White Miller? Welcome. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Dan White Miller with Specialized Public Financing, the financial advisor to the city. Just a couple of points that I was going to expand on. The refunding right now is approximately $17 million. The $38 million includes certain maturities that as we move forward, as Carol mentioned, the authority is for up to a year. What happens is, once we go past the beginning of next calendar year, basically, we move forward a year from an investment standpoint and a interest rate standpoint, and there'll be some marginal candidates if we remain in a very low interest rate environment, which some project. And as we get into next year, there may be some additional candidates come back and refinance. So we leave out of this issuing certain candidates that are marginal right now to retain the flexibility that you all want, and then we will evaluate those as we move down the road. But right now, the prime candidate's are roughly $17 million of tax and utility debt, so the savings will be allocated to the portion of either tax rate or utility that benefits from the savings. Savings right now is estimated at right around $1 million that you'll receive over the life of the debt. As Carol mentioned, there's no extension or change to the debt structure, just refinancing to lower the interest cost from roughly the 4% to 5% range on average, balancing something in the low threes is what we're projecting right now. On the pass-through side, one of the unique qualities, and as Carol mentioned, that we've got a lot of folks that have used the pass-through and limited tax revenue bond structure. It was important when that legislation was created, because you're relying on a large amount of money from Tech dot to help pay the debt service, to create the understanding from a market standpoint, someone buying the bonds to know that this is City of Temple, but within that agreement, they understand the commitment of Tech dot. We also wanted Tech dot to understand their commitment long-term and inclusion to help fund a project that would be supported by the state as well. So from that vantage point, the security is understood by the investing public today that it's a cross pledge, Tech dot revenues and City of Temple supporting that issue. Very strong credit to the marketplace. The premium discounts, as Tracy mentioned earlier, the market, depending on how the bond issues are priced, sometimes we reduce the par amount that you're borrowing because buyers are paying a premium to you with rates being as low as they are to buy the issue. So we've built in some flexibility to the sizing of the issue to either bring in premium, and that was that line item there. So we want to issue as much as we need, and within market structure, that's called for at the time, and it shouldn't absolutely fit within your budget constraints and what we've worked with previously. And right now, we're estimating on that issue around 4% because of the longer term. The good news is, as this project has developed, rates have either come down or stabilized at very low levels, so it's a very opportune time to issue. We anticipate going to market, and we have rating agency has it scheduled for later in April, and then we will go to market on the refunding as quickly as the market is ready for us and the documents are ready, get the rating back, and then the pass-through will come based on the timing of the project need, so we can size it only to the amount necessary. And then from that point, we'll come back and give you all an update.
Great. Thank you, Mr. White Miller. Questions on the financial aspects of the bonds? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Both these items are scheduled for a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the Council on either of these items, the ordinance relating to the obligation refunding bond, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, or the Temple, Texas Pass Through Agreement Revenue and Limited Tax Bonds, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The Council will take these items separately, and so I'll entertain a motion for the ordinance on the City of Temple, Temple, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, one or more series not to exceed $38 million, and the affiliated documents with the maturity date not to exceed August 1, 2026. Motion for approval. Second. Motion of second for approval of the motion for discussion. There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
The next item is the item, Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of City of Temple, Texas Pass Through Agreement Revenue and Limited Tax Bonds, one or more series not to exceed $35,515,000, and the affiliated related documents for bonds not to exceed a maturity date of August 1, 2042. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second for approval, further discussion. There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Look forward to seeing you again when we get to the other side of this process. Good, thank you. Senator Rhodes, good to see you, sir. Thanks for being here. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under this section consent are to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the Council, any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any Council member, and will be considered separately. This is Item 7, A through J, and I believe we're removing Item F for voting purposes, and Item I for specific recorded action. Any other items to remove from Consent Agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the Consent Agenda, Items 7, A through J, less 7F and 7I.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion of second for approval of the Consent Agenda as indicated. There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item 7F is to consider adopting a resolution granting Panda Temple power private easements through city-owned property for an affluent transmission line from the Dozier Farm Waste Treatment Plant to the Panda plant site, and that's item one of that 7F. And then two is to consider adopting a resolution approving an infrastructure development agreement with Panda Temple Power. I don't believe this needs a presentation, I think it's just for voting purposes, so I'll entertain a motion on 7F, Items 1 and 2. Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion of second, is there further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item 7I is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing negotiation and execution of all documents and instruments necessary or desirable to acquire real property interest from Gensler Investments, Inc., Wilson Art International, Inc., and McLean Company, Inc., for the Northwest Loop 363 pass-through project, and declaring an official intent to reimburse associated expenditures made prior to the issuance of taxes and obligations for this project. Mr. Graham.
Mayor, we discussed this in executive session, and we would ask for a motion that would authorize the execution of all the documents necessary to acquire the Gensler-Wilson Art and McLean Company tracks.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is there a motion on Item 7I?
I have a motion to authorize the negotiation and execution of all documents and instruments, including possession and use agreement, necessary or desirable to acquire real property interest from Gensler Investments, Inc., Wilson Art International, Inc., and McLean Company, Inc., for the Northwest Loop 363 pass-through project not to exceed $686,249.
Motion is there, second.
Second.
Motion of second. Any further discussion on the item? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item 8 is a second reading, consider adopting an ordinance establishing a premium threshold speed limit on State Highway 36 within the city limits. Mr. Robson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is being brought forward as a second reading. Last time we presented the item, I think there might have been some misunderstanding in the presentation, so wanted to clarify the item itself and the determination of what's in front of you. Basically, we're looking at establishing a school zone along State Highway 36, and the mile markers and the details are still on the agenda item. This is as established by Tech dot. This particular speed zone is a two-step-down speed zone because we are reducing the speed limit from 60 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour during school times only. So all the other times, the speed zone will remain 60 miles per hour. So I think that's the difference in what you heard last time. So we thought it was best to bring this back and review some of the items.
That's better.
Any questions?
Questions from the Council? Thank you very much. Given that stipulation that that drop in speed is only during school hours, then I entertain a motion on the second reading of the ordinance to establish the speed limit on State Highway 36.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second for approval of the item. Is there further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Clow.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Allen, we're not able to bring up our agendas on our computers. All we can get is the presentation. Item 9 is a first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from single-family one district to general retail district on Lot 3, Block 8, Park Lawn Edition, Bell County, Texas, located in 2007 North 7th Street on a one-quarter acre of abandoned portion of North 7th Street. Ms. Spear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a rezoning that goes with the abandonment that you all approved a few weeks ago. This is the property. It's located on North 7th, but it's adjacent to property on North 3rd. This area is the area of right-of-way abandonment, and then this is a small parcel that was remaining, single-family zoning, so both of these are being proposed for general retail zoning to be consolidated into the larger developments. Uh-oh. Is it sideways now? So. We all turned our heads. Eight degrees. The, I will go ahead and tell you that the packet left out two denials, so those were left on the dice in front of you. That's what's before you. I wanted to make sure that you all received those. We have two denials show up from the denials around in the location of this rezoning request.
Are those two denials prior to the planning and zoning?
They were right at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they weren't in the original packet. There were actually several questions, and some members of the audience had asked some questions at the P&amp;Z meeting, and the applicant did go on record, and I believe alleviated many of those concerns. This particular access off North 7th, there was some concerns about what type of buffering would be required, and the access would be into the site from North 7th, and it's not. They've actually had
acre of abandoned portion of North 7th Street. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a rezoning that goes with the abandonment that you all approved a few weeks ago. This is the property. It's located on North 7th, but it's adjacent to property on North 3rd. This area is the area of right-of-way abandonment, and then this is a small parcel that was remaining single-family zoning. So both of these are being proposed for general retail zoning to be consolidated into the larger developments. Uh-oh. Is it sideways now? So. We all turned our heads. He agrees. The, um, I will go ahead and tell you that the packet left out two denials, so those were left on the dice in front of you. That's what's before you. I wanted to make sure that you all received those. We have two denials show up from the names that's around in the location of this rezoning request.
Are those two denials prior to the planning and zoning?
They were right at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they weren't in the original package. There were actually several questions, and some members of the audience had asked me questions at the P&amp;Z meeting, and the applicant did go on record and I believe alleviated many of those concerns. This particular access off North 7th, there was some concerns about what type of buffering would be required, and the access would be into the site from North 7th, and it's not. They've actually have a plan that's going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and their access is denied in that portion. So I believe that most of those concerns have been alleviated. There will also be a six-foot opaque wood fence required as well. Um, I can continue, Ma'On. The, uh, we did receive two notices in favor, three for approval and two for denial, and those two for denial you have, the three for approval are also adjacent property owners or in the general area. Staff recommended approval of the rezoning request. The rezoning doesn't fully comply with our future land use map, but it does partially, and what is left of this lot is an undeveloped piece of property, so it does make sense to combine it with the adjacent parcel. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as well, seven to zero on Arch Fifth, 2012. The applicant is here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions we have as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Spear. Council questions before we go to public hearing?
I just, I have a question for the...
Okay.
This is only the, uh, the change of this zoning request is only for the abandoned portion that...
Yes, sir. It's the abandoned portion and then that small leftover triangle from the previous single family. The remainder of the tract is already general retail.
The remainder of the tract?
That's on North 3rd, yes, sir.
Okay.
So it's the little piece that's just off the end of track?
Yes, sir.
The North 7th. The road goes into it and looks like you'd have access from there, but the intention is to not have any access...
There will be no access. In fact, there will be a fence there.
Of 7th Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions or comments? There being none, this item requires a public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Councilmember Dunn, you wanted to ask a question yet?
Yes, sir. And, actually, if you go up there, then, thank you. I'd had some conversations with some of the neighbors, and they're, I think after they came to understand what it was that you were trying to do, it really cleans up that area very well. Would there be any way that you would consider, along with the fence, putting in some shrubbery along the back just to give it a little bit of an additional buffer?
Yes, sir. My name is Scott Don, I'm with Dye Enterprises, uh, San Antonio, and I'm the representative and landlord and landlord owner as well, for this case. Yes, matter of fact, my understanding is that the, immediately after the P&amp;Z meeting, I notified my client about their desires, and I'm understanding, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen the plans, but I'm understanding they did put that and included in the plans for the building permit. But they included, I believe, the citizens of the people, the neighbors that I met with were asking for maybe some trade moves, and I've relayed that to Dollar General. I'm understanding that they have included that in their plans. If that's not the case, then please contact me, and I'll make sure that they, they're willing to do it. So we'll just make sure that it's set in their plans.
Like you, I was seven, uh, getting the picture, but the curve, is that just gonna cut at each place and just continue a curve? It's not gonna have that Y any longer? Is that, is that right? Is it, how's that gonna work? I mean...
There'll be still a bit of leftover piece. When we get it rebooted, maybe I can show you a little better.
Because we got potentially a problem for someone just to be a parking lot for the neighborhood, or...
The way that it is, I mean, if you don't mind me, so the way that it is now, because this is a couple blocks away from where I live, uh, the, it actually takes most of that opportunity away. That's been a situation that has happened for, you know, 50 years probably, and, and it, you'll have that a little bit, but it's much better than what it's been in the past.
Yeah, but it creates a Y, but, but will it cut off that Y portion and replace the curve to make the road look linear instead of an intersection? Does that make sense?
Yeah, the extension of the curve, it's also the road...
Yes, sir. Has there been access from that direction, correct? All right. And there won't be an entry point?
No, sir. We have a non-access easement, that we cannot gain access from that street.
Okay. So my question is, is, I mean, will the road on the northeast side be continued as curb and gutter just to make the road look like a road instead of an intersection?
No.
Otherwise, you'll have a fence across an intersection, basically?
No, sir. The fence will be actually, you can let the citizens, uh, all those, this will be where the fence is located. These residents will get access from here.
Okay.
So it'll just be closed off.
I see that.
Now, believe the residents too on the other side, behind Dollar General as well, will have access. They've been gaining access around the industry.
Right before that.
I'm just wondering, I was reading just some of the comments. It's in a neighborhood. I'm just wondering what impact it will have if there's children walking from school, you know, the traffic flow. Will that be increased that much, or what safeguards are in place?
Well, all access would be from on North 3rd Street. There will be no access to the rear at all. So as far as the residential portion, we wouldn't have an impact on that. Our access would be to an existing driveway that has a, a turn lane on North 3rd Street to access, better access in and out of the site. We will be installing a sidewalk across the front of the property, which we've discussed with planning and the core requirements. So I think I believe at this moment, we're understanding a minimum of a six-foot sidewalk across the front of the property adjacent to the curb with the potential of it going wider, too.
Yes, sir. With the potential, with the first and third street overlay possibility, we've talked to the applicant about oversized participation.
So it should, I guess the run should enhance, actually, pedestrian movement across the front, which, and in the back, we're not taking access, so it shouldn't affect the children in the neighborhood and the neighborhood. And then, of course, with the screening, they really wanted that to kind of soften the look, so they're not just looking at a hardwood fence. So, and my understanding is that has been incorporated in the plans, but, so it seems that it's...
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Doc, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Now, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading. Item number nine.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion is second for approval of the ordinance rezoning of the item. There no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item 10 is a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from General Retail District, Single Family One District, and Single Family Two District, Two, and Multi-Family Two, on approximately 15-acre tract of land out of the McKinney and Williams survey, City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, located on the north side of Southwest HK Dodge and Loop, west of Bird Creek Crossing Shopping Center, and east of Hopi Trail. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have done this the old-fashioned way, so I'll do my best.
You're gonna do it the hard way?
This agenda item, it is a rezoning request. This property, if you all are familiar with it, it's adjacent to the Western Hills neighborhood, due to north of Bird Creek, and it's off the loop. It's right there at the railroad tracks and the loop, and it actually does not have access from the loop because of the wall in this area. So the 15 acres that they're proposing to rezone to multi-family would have to have access from Hopi, either through Philly or up and around on Erie. Um...
We've got them up available on our screens.
You have everything?
Yeah, we have them on our screens.
Great. Um, the property now, it contains several zoning districts, primarily Single Family One, Single Family Two, but there is a little bit of general retail. The applicants, when they came in originally, they're purchasing another portion of property just to the north of this site, adjacent essentially to the back of those residences on Philly, right? And so the proposal in the future is to come back and do a planned development for the entire thing, but part of their first proposal was just a rezoning for the multi-family. Um, the multi-family, the 15 acres and the density that they're asking for would allow up to 300 units. However, we do not have the appropriate access for 300 units, so they would be limited to around 75 to 100 units maximum with the access points that they currently have. So their, their discussions about coming back with additional property would seem necessary, and it would seem that they would want to do that to take full advantage of the rezoning, but it's not guaranteed. And that was something that I wanted to make sure you all understood. This is just a straight zoning request for these 15 acres. The property does have utilities in place, so it's appropriate in that regard. It complies with our land use plan in some manner because it's actually slated for sort of commercial, but there is no access to the loop, so this is really the next grade down rather than just single family. The staff recommended approval of the request because it partially complied with the future land use map. It complied with the Theraco plan. There were public facilities available. We did express our concern to the Planning and Zoning Commission about the possibility of limiting the number of units because of the access points, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval as well, 6/0 on March 5th. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So there's no access to this particular site?
Correct.
But if they come back, I'm understanding they're either acquiring or in the process of trying to acquire that area that's towards Hopi Trail?
Yes, but they would still take access from Hopi.
Yes, it gets no front and short access.
No front and short access. So they would essentially cross over where Antelope, if they'd extended him to a real street, that's how they would get access.
Would that increase their, their number of units?
Yes, sir. Whatever that acreage is, and I believe it's around 15, would allow another, up to 300 units if they went multi-family. What they've discussed with us is single family and multi-family, a combination of dwelling types.
On the, to be acquired property?
Yes, sir.
And put the apartments in this one that we're considering the rezoning on tonight?
The apartments would be the straight zoning, and they may in fact come back with the, and include this as part of the PD in the future as well, to develop the whole thing as one, one development.
So we'll, we'll see, can they, um, are they gonna have to do a zoning change on the several properties they're applying, because that's GR right now?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll get to see this again.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless they choose to do the 75 to 100 units.
And then their access would, that'd be off of Antelope, then? Would be cut Antelope through there?
No, they don't have access to Antelope.
Okay.
It's not included in their property.
Okay, so they then come through the neighborhood Philly and then back up that way?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure everybody would throw up with that.
We...
This is zoning, or you could tell that you read it?
I didn't get to mention this, and I, because I'm not seeing what I'm showing you. Uh, but we did receive one notification in favor of it across the railroad tracks, and then we received one denial. But at the Planning and Zoning Commission, because of the way the site is shaped, the amount of, the limitation on the 200-foot buffer really limited the amount of folks in that neighborhood that got notifications. So we did receive some response from those people from the sign against the rezoning, but no one that actually received a 200-foot letter.
I think that's a, I've, I've had a couple of questions about that. That's a pretty valid point that, you know, in the future, if we have, if we have issues like this where you're kind of in a, I have to say, no man's land, but if we could, you know, extend, if we could have a, you know, a courtesy bailout to the existing homeowners or to the closest areas or people that would be directly affected by this, if we could, you know, or, I guess it's more...
I'm gonna let David speak to that if I want to.
Well, I, I think our process, and I'll ask maybe Mr. Graham to step in too, or offer some comments. I mean, the process we follow is dictated by codes and by state law in terms of notifications. Certainly understand the comment, the observation about the lack of notice to surrounding areas outside of that, but I think it gets a little challenging from the staff standpoint to determine when and how far courtesy notices are supposed to be extended. So we typically tend to follow state law and code processes for notifications. Again, I understand the sensitivities associated with that and the challenges that may present in some cases, not just in this one, but I can see cases where we've had, you know, maybe a single property owner that surrounds a tract, maybe for some distance. There's just a variety of circumstances, but again, that's been our policy and our practice, and we'll follow it. And again, I'll let Mr. Graham add to that or subtract from it.
Well, I think it's just, as you said, I mean, the state law is a provision that says thou shalt give notice within that. Anything beyond that, it would be voluntary, and I think what we're, maybe our concern would be, you know, when do you do that? And when, you know, it's an exercise of discretion, so, and there are, of course, costs associated with doing that as well unless you're prepared to do it every time, you know. We could certainly have a different standard than the state requires, you know, set it much higher, but there's costs associated with that.
Over through that 200 feet, if I see that little piece that jumps up, um, is that Erie at that, you were fine with the map that was there? Oh, there we go. Thanks. Okay, incorporated some of the housing, but not very much. Get any response from them, which is...
No, we didn't receive response from those.
It's like two or three houses, maybe.
Property owner with the denial, what is?
There's a billboard there.
Oh, okay.
Small one.
Okay. All right.
I was gonna say, where's that? This is that bridge, though.
Okay, the other question. Now, this item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Kirk Wooler. I live at 2011 Cascade Trail in Greger, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I'm available to, one, answer some questions and also give you some background in terms of how we came up with this approach to the site. That'll give you some context on how and why that it ended up looking like it does. That might give you some insight into the overall project. The site in total, and this, can you put on the map?
We can try.
This one here.
What function?
The tract that we currently have under contract with the sever is a 30-acre tract, of which the portion that's up for a rezon request is 15 of the 30. The actual tract itself...
What's that, this one? That's your adjacent?
That's your, it's not all, but, um, our tract extends from, this is the portion being rezoned. Our tract extends all the way up to the backside of the single family here.
That part, sorry.
Just...
Which one you want?
Just the left. Um, which is Zone SF1. So initially, we came with the notion that we would put multi-family here and do general retail here up close to the loop. It's that gradual progression from a lower density to a higher density to commercial use. However, I'm meeting with city staff and the planning department. We looked at it and thought that it would be a more neighborhood-friendly approach to, rather than putting the multi-family directly up against the existing single family, we'd rather maintain the existing zoning of this section so that there's a single-family buffer between all of the existing residential neighborhood and any new development. So any new development that would butt up directly to existing single family, both in this section and that section, will maintain single-family zoning. Now, as mentioned previously, in order to get access to this portion of the site that's under request for a rezon, we're gonna have to come back with a PD application that'll allow us to give a full concept of our design to city staff and also to the council that we'll then have to receive approval for, for this site to be fully developed. Without that, what we've done is... Without that, what we've done is we've spent time and money rezoning a site that we can't really access effectively. So, this is but stage one of a multi-step process. The first step was to get the underlying zoning in place so that a PD application would actually be effective in requesting for the overall development that we're proposing.
And you say you own that other property there that's in between the existing housing and...
There's not another property. There's one.
Oh, okay. You own all of that property.
Thirty-acre tract, of which this is 15 acres of the total. So, we're acquiring, intended upon the rezon, acquiring the entire 30-acre tract, of which in order to justify the development, though, it had to have that underlying base zoning based upon advice from city staff.
So, for that portion that you're advocating be single family, will you develop that as well?
Yes, absolutely. This will be one cohesive development that'll be developed by our group.
Okay.
That'll be a combination of both single-family dwellings and multifamily residences.
Staging, are you gonna do the multifamily first, or do you know yet, or...
That's a good question.
Okay.
Because it's potentially a large development, it'll be something that occurs over probably multiple construction phases. What'll happen first is typically a clubhouse leasing space, pool, and amenities center that will then benefit the entire development.
To include the single-family portion as well? I see. Okay. Okay. Any questions? Mr. Willard? This is first reading and a zoning change only. Appreciate you sharing the plans with us. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counselor, your pleasure on item 10 for this rezoning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval of the item. Any further discussion?
Just got one question or clarification. What we're voting on now will only allow the density of what?
The density is 20 units per acre, but it will only be able to be developed 75 to 100 units.
Okay.
Because of the access.
And then, with additional access, if they provide it later, they can increase the density?
Correct.
I'll follow that.
Thank you. Further comment or question? You being the Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Item 11 is a first reading and a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, less than 75% of gross revenue in a restaurant on Lot 1, Block 1, the marketplace, Section 1, located at 3,008 South 31st Street. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a CUP request for the existing Smash Burger Restaurant. It's on general retail. They've made this request. They've been open for a few months now. In conjunction with this request, they're also hoping to turn the existing landscape median into some outdoor seating. This is the location in the actual shopping center for your reference. Yellow, just off Market Loop. Some pictures of the surrounding businesses and access points. This is the nearest residential structure. It's 750 feet, so it meets our requirements. This is just a site plan that's included in your packet as well. This is the indoor seating that's existing. It's approximately 60 seats that are available.
How many?
60.
Six.
This represents the 12 by 27 landscape median that exists now, and their original plan called for 26 seats, outdoor seating areas. Their intention was to raise the height of that landscape bed to match the sidewalk elevation and to put railing around it. This is just a visual... This is the actual landscape area that they're proposing for outdoor seating. This is a diagram that's in your packet of just the rail. It will match what's there now. This is the notification map that we sent out. We didn't have any responses. We did have one courtesy notice response from the shopping center, a tenant in the shopping center. We recommended approval of the conditional use permit. It's compatible with the future land use map, which is fine for the thoroughfare plan, but we did have some conditions that we recommended on the outdoor seating area. And those, we included finishing the concrete in some sort of decorative stain or stamped finish so that it was very distinct that it was an outdoor seating area, that they follow all TABC rules for outdoor consumption of alcohol. We had recommended that they limit the outdoor seating area to 18 seats. That would remove the middle tables. And then, we wanted decorative umbrellas for 50% of the outdoor tables. Also, to relocate the landscaping that's there now to another site that's very close, there's some opportunities along Market Loop to relocate the same amount of shrubs and landscaping. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of mine oh on March 19th. With the stipulations recommended by staff with one amendment, they allowed for 22 seats. The applicant requested the ability to do 22 seats with different types of tables, and so they approved it in that manner. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this.
So, what alcohol does this allow?
Beer and wine.
Strictly beer and wine in this.
It's actually all alcoholic beverages, but it's less than 75%. Sorry.
Okay, so it's not limited to beer and wine?
No, it's...
Okay. Other questions? If not this item requires a public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Did you bring dinner?
My name is Brad Brown. I represent Smash Burger. I do want to clarify on the permit, while the CUP is for all types of alcohol, our application to TABC is for beer and wine only. We won't be serving full liquor anyways. I am here to answer any other questions you may have as well.
Counsel, any other questions? No? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that clarification. Anyone else wishing to speak before the council? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counselor, your pleasure on the first reading of the CUP request.
Motion to approve.
I'll take it.
Motion is second for approval of the CUP request. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
I'm sorry, for clarification, is the motion to approve with the recommendations by PUC?
Of the PUZ to 22 seating?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next item, item 12, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the final plat of Diamond S. Edition in approximately 10.39 acre, two-lot, non-residential subdivision, being a replat of Midway One Edition and part of the George Given survey, abstract 345, located at the southeast corner of Midway Drive and southeast and south General Boost Drive. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This plat is coming before you because of the exception request. It also has some conditions because of the timing. This is the Garland Shelton plat off of Shallow Ford West Road. So, this is the existing Garland Shelton used car lot. This is the proposed site of the new car lot. And then, Shallow Ford West Road is being proposed to be rerouted on a temporary basis with this plat. And so, the exceptions have to do really with the rerouting of this road. I'll show you on the plat. The orange represents where the road is now on the entire side. The red represents where the new right-of-way is actually going to be in place as a street and utility easement that the applicant will maintain ownership of, but we will be able to have public access to. So, the road will follow along their property boundary and then up north to Midway. So, it'll go just behind the existing used car lot currently.
And being built to city standards?
No, so it'll be built to county standards. That's part of the exception request. The Collector Street right-of-way that we require now is 55 feet, but this portion of the road will be 55-foot right-of-way, and then this portion's only 40-foot of right-of-way. The pavement width will also be reduced from 36-foot to 24-feet back-to-back, or, excuse me, with two-foot ribbon curb on each side. So, it'll be essentially built to county standards the way that the road is now, and then they'll have the two-foot ribbon curb on each side. They will not put in the sidewalks that would normally be required on one side of the Collector, so that's the other exception. So, the exceptions have to do with the right-of-way width, so the width of that right-of-way, the pavement width, and then the sidewalks. What's also important to note is there will be a stop sign at this location and a stop sign at this location as well. So, that'll be different for this site. There was not enough room to get the curb radius that we needed to make the turn. Staff made recommendation of approval. Because of the timing and financial obligations, the applicant did request we get this approved through the city process. However, there's also some interesting things with the TextDOT right-of-way on the Shallow Ford West Road. The right-of-way was supposed to have been given to the county many, many years ago and then given to the city, and actually, TextDOT still holds that right-of-way. So, the applicant is going through a process with TextDOT to get the right-of-way transfer. So, this plat, once it's approved, will essentially sit and not be recorded until that right-of-way is issued, is taken care of. And then, we have some other conditions that the plat needed to take care of as well, and those are on the slide. We took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 19th, and they recommended approval with all exceptions and all staff conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you just flip back, flip back one slide?
These are the conditions to the actual plat document. They include some cleanup information.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, some questions for Ms. Spear?
You mentioned this will be, the road will be temporary. What is the permanent solution to that?
The permanent solution is really to find a location for Shallow Ford to come along in this way over time, or a different iteration as it presents itself. But this has been a long discussion with the city attorney, city manager, and the applicant over several years, trying to figure out the best way. There've been several proposals along the way, but because of access to I-35, because of the property that was owned, and because of fire and emergency response times, this ended up being the best solution at the end of the day.
But it's temporary until another...
Yes, sir. It could be a long-term temporary solution.
Could show up wherever, don't have it's access road south of... South of the new construction, in other words.
South, no.
Right by that concrete plant.
Well, by the pipe supply and...
Yeah.
Or even...
I mean, you know, I think it would do, it would limit the access for people going there, coming from Midway area that have to go south and east.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that the applicant looked at in our request. We actually looked at several properties that could punch through to the access road, and if you get too close to the exit there, you can't really meet TextDOT requirements if you're too close to it. And there were only a couple of places, and you're right, one of the problems was, I think the Public Works Department had done some traffic studies out there to see how many cars were going north and south, different types of the day, and it really, it only addresses, you know, traffic going north, not traffic going the other direction.
I think the other issue... Trucking coming back there, you know, coming around that mall, having to divert all that.
The other issue, we did explore that, as did the applicant. The other issue associated with this public safety response times and, you know, the inability to, for that, again, going south from Midway to get down through there, it really had some issues with some of those areas really taking the long way to get around if there wasn't some sort of access off of Midway.
Yeah, it's going to help them to get there.
Not, from my perspective, not an ideal solution, but for at least an unknown interim time period, a workable solution, certainly to get that tract usable.
Should now entertain a motion on the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second for approval of the resolution on the final plat of the Diamond S. Edition. Any further discussion or comment? You being the Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Item 13 is consider adopting a resolution, appointing one alternate member to the Bell County Public Health District Board of Directors. We're not prepared to bring a recommendation on that item forward at this time. Intertain a motion to table.
So...
Motion is second to table the appointment of an alternate of Bell County Public Health District Board of Directors. There's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Item 14, consider adopting a resolution, appointing one alternate member to the Building and Standards Commission to fill an expiring term through March 2014. Is there a recommendation for individual for that appointment?
Lee Clausen.
Recommendation, a motion to appoint Lee Clausen as the alternate member for Building and Standards Commission, expiring term of March of 2014. Is there a second? I have motion is second for discussion. You being the Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for this evening's meeting. Thank you very much for your attention and participation. This meeting is adjourned.